It's a fun, fun phase. How are your duties doing?
They're doing well.
Welcome. To the Sunapee School Board meeting for October 5th, I believe. Fourth, excuse me. October 4th. Planning Board tomorrow night. I'll call the meeting to order, so I'd like to start with a roll call. I'm going to start all the way in the corner with Mr. Moynihan, or maybe even Ray. We've never...
Ray Payton, Library and Superintendent of Life.
Thank you, Ray.
Sean Moynihan, Principal, Sunapee and Life School.
Are you the principal of Sunapee and Life?
Jody Fergan, Principal, Sunapee Central Elementary School.
Where is your head?
Jackie Ball, Student Representative.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Brian Garland, School Board.
Me.
You.
You.
Jim O'Shaughnessy, Attorney for the School District.
Paul Scarron, School Board.
Russ Holden, Superintendent.
April Rice, School Board.
Jesse Tyler, School Board.
Kelly Russell, Business Administrator.
Thank you, Kate. I'm sorry. I was about to raise the standard three said something. All right, if we could all stand. Are we even... Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could take a moment of meditation. Thank you. Okay. We'll start the meeting off. I think our first item of business is to approve the school board meeting minutes from September 6th, 2017. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from September 6th, 2017.
Motion made by Ed. Seconded by April. Is there any discussion on those minutes?
Good minutes.
Okay. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And were there any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Agenda review.
We have one. Field trip. We could add that to the action item. Some of you girls' outdoor club would like to go on a field trip. I'll pass that over.
Thank you, Russ. Public forum. I'm going to open it up to the public. This is the portion of our meeting where we open it to the public for agenda items to be talked about, discussed. So, three minutes per person, 15 minutes in total. If we exceed 15 minutes, we need a vote from the board to extend it. Would anybody like to go to the microphone? Seeing no movement, I'll close the public forum portion of this meeting and move on to our presentation. Russ, if you could introduce our guest.
Sure. Jim O'Shaughnessy, Attorney from Drummond Woodson. I've had the opportunity to listen to not only general other folks from Drummond Woodson, actually just attended the Brad Kidder Law Conference today. And they're a great firm. I've actually worked with Drummond Woodson when I was in Maine for a year as well. And I asked Jim if he could come down today and speak to the board regarding free speech and public session, if you will, a public forum. And he's also, Jim's also working with me regarding social media at this time. So, Jim, what was yours?
Take it from here. So, the board asked me back in July to look at their public forum policy, which is policy, some of you may remember, and others, policy BEDH, and specifically look at the policy surrounding the public forum. And to address really what the board can and can't do within the confines of the First Amendment, which is a federal law. I mean, if the Constitution basically says that members of the public have a right to free speech. So, the way I always think about it when I work with, I work with a lot of school boards, is first of all, this is the meeting of the school board. So, school district's a public corporation, they're a municipal corporation, just like your town's a municipal corporation. And like a lot of corporations, there is a board. And the board is, they're your agents as the legislative body and the voters, and you guys elected them to run the business of the district. This meeting is their business meeting. They have business meetings once or twice a month. And typically what they're doing in a business meeting is they're talking about policy issues. That's the primary business of a school board, is to make policy. They're doing a lot of ministerial stuff. They're approving manifests, and they're approving the budgets, and they're doing some of those, you know, operational, day-to-day type things. And from time to time, school boards, in the business of being a school board, may sit in a quasi-judicial capacity to adjudicate a personnel issue or a student issue. Because it's their meeting, there actually isn't any, technically, and I don't think many boards do this, but there isn't any obligation for that board to provide any opportunity for the public to speak. They have to provide an opportunity for the public to watch and listen, which creates a kind of an awkward dynamic, because you guys are out there just watching what they're doing, and the school board, and the public naturally want to have some interaction. You guys want to ask questions or know things that maybe they haven't talked about. But technically, a board doesn't have to provide any opportunity for the public to participate at all. If it doesn't, then under the Constitution and the laws governing free speech, that's, there is no public forum. It's a, just the board meeting. The board does its thing, they go home, and the public hasn't had a chance to offer anything to the board. The board can create a public forum. Sometimes boards do that. And so, when you create a public forum on your agenda by policy, there's different kinds of public forums. So, if the board just says, "We're creating a public forum." It's going to be the, you know, first, whatever it is, you know, the first 15 minutes, second thing on the agenda. If they just create a public forum, then that public forum, if there's no other limitations on it, is an opportunity for the public, subject to the time, the manner, and other, you know, sort of physical limitations. The public can get up and say really whatever they want to say. Can't be vulgar or offensive, and can't threaten violence. Because the board creates an open public forum, the public can speak in any manner it chooses. And under the law, the board can't really restrict people based on what they're saying, the viewpoint or the content of your speech. So, if they disagree with, "I don't like your opinion, I think you're mean," or "I think you're being, you know, not nice," or "orderly critical," that doesn't matter. That's a viewpoint, and you've created an open forum. And just like I can go out on city town hall lawn and say, "I think Mayor's a bad guy," or whatever, I can come here and say, "I think you're not doing a good job." Most boards through policy, and I think this is true for Sunapee, have not adopted a pure open forum, but have adopted what's called a limited public forum. Sometimes they call it a designated public forum. An unlimited public forum is where they say, "It's a public forum, but we're limiting it to subjects that are pertinent to the agenda." So, you, because that's the business we're dealing with today, and we want to give you a chance to talk about it, but we have the ability to limit the content based on what we're doing here. We've created a limited public forum. The New Hampshire School Boards Association's model policy, which I have in here, which is policy BEDH, is the policy that most school districts in the state of New Hampshire have adopted and implemented. It's based on a national policy, and the National School Boards Association also adopts that policy. And I know we represent a lot of districts in New Hampshire and a lot of districts in Maine. I have 30 school attorneys in my firm. It's pretty standard for school boards and for school attorneys to recommend that school board policies say, "Limited public forum, agenda items only." Even though no one wants to do that, it's been traditionally difficult to have an open forum or to limit it in other ways without running afoul of the First Amendment, but also giving members of the public a chance to maybe speak critically or tell the board things about stuff that's not on the agenda. So, you have this situation. I think the situation, from what I understand, is sort of in a tension. In Sunapee, it's the tension in a lot of school districts where if they limit it to agenda items only, you don't get a chance to talk about things that are on the agenda. And if the agenda is really boring and vanilla, well, you know, too bad. And that's not, I think, what most small school districts want. You guys want a chance to say, "No, it's not on the agenda, but I was, I was at a soccer game, and I thought it like the, you know, I noticed X, Y, and Z, and don't you think it would be best for the community if we did this instead?" That's the kind of stuff that the community ought to be able to come and sort of say at a meeting. So, you're stuck in a rock and a hard place. And I was tasked with trying to help figure out a way to get you guys out of it, to strike that balance. And I've read a lot of Supreme Court cases from, you know, the US Supreme Court, and I've read a lot of appeals court cases from all over the country, in Texas and Chicago, and a lot of school districts happening all over the country. And typically, what it centers around, most typically, are situations where members of the public want to be critical of personnel. Right? Because let's face it, that's who you're interact, that's, you're here because you have kids in the school district, and your kids have a particular person they're working with, and there's tension there. And so, where the public interacts with the school districts is through teachers. And so, you guys want to come here, and you want to talk about teachers or coaches. That's where the tension is. That's where the problems arise across the country. That's what a lot of the cases are about. And for the most part, school boards haven't really managed handling those conversations terribly well, so you have a lot of cases that say, "You can't just shut someone down if you create an open forum," simply because they want to talk about, they want to be critical of personnel in general. Or they want to be critical about the personnel, the English department at the high school, or the math department, the math program, and the math teachers at the middle school. However, there are, there are cases, and there, there's a way to create a limited forum where the board says, "Look, it's, as a school board, it's really not our job to manage these staff. It's the superintendent's job." We hire the superintendent, we hire a business administrator, you know, we hire a student services director, and then those people go out and run the school district for us. And by state law and Department of Ed regulation, those are the, that's the job of the superintendent. It's Russ's job to go find teachers and staff them, staff the schools, supervise, evaluate, discipline, you know, help them improve, get rid of them if they're not doing a good job, and address performance problems. That's the superintendent's job. It's not the board's job. So, looking at a way to say to the public, "Look, we're happy to have an open forum, but it's limited to not agenda items only." But my thought, as part of the solution, may be to limit it to matters which are in the jurisdiction and authority of the school board primarily, not matters which are primarily within the jurisdiction of superintendent. So, it's limited to the board's business. And general complaints about, that's fine, general complaints about personnel or programs at the school, yeah, absolutely. If it starts becoming individualized to talk about personnel and those kind of complaints, there's a policy, we have policy KL and KLD, which are really grievance procedures that the board has adopted and said, "If you have a problem with folks working in the schools, we want to know about it. We have a duty to deal with it, and here's the way, here's the way to address it through these policies which allow us to carry it through the proper administrative channels." So, you make, you have a complaint about a teacher, then it first goes to the principals. And if that's not addressed there, then it can go next to the superintendent. And if it's not addressed there, then it can be appealed further up the chain of command. Your current policy does allude to that. I think it's been difficult to implement. I think the board's reluctant to implement it, and there's been a lot of pushback in the community. What I always encourage my school boards to remember is, part of your job is to educate the public about why it's important to have those kinds of policies, so that you're not creating a culture and a climate within a district where employees don't want to, don't feel welcome, don't want to come to work, don't enjoy being teachers anymore. And in New Hampshire, with the workforce issues we're having, we don't, we don't want to see good teachers leaving Sunapee. We don't, we don't want to see good teachers leaving the field. So, we don't want to make it too difficult to be a teacher or a public employee in a school district. We want people to, the best people to come here and teach our kids. So, I'm happy to answer questions. I don't know if I've, if I've helped you folks at all, or what role you want me to play here. But I'm working with these guys to help you guys develop a healthier, and I don't know if it's you specifically, I don't know who anybody is, but I'm helping you develop a healthy, efficient way of addressing issues and not bog the board down in personnel matters, which really aren't the board's problems to solve. It's not within their power to deal with personnel. So...
All right, Jim, thank you. I'm going to, whereas Jim's here as a guest and also as a friend.
Paying you.
You don't have to come on as a school attorney.
Put it that way, I guess. As your lawyer.
The first portion, I'm going to limit the questions to the board members, and then I'm going to open it up to whomever wants to ask a question, and then hopefully we'll...
And if it gets too dicey, look, I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to give legal advice in public unless I think it's, it's really a safe, good idea. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. I don't, at some point in time, I have to be able to give you guys advice in a confidential way. So, but I want to help, so...
So, our current policy is, at the beginning, we have limited public forum. Agenda only.
Exactly.
Yep. The last portion of our meeting, the last 15 minutes, is an open policy.
Yes.
Where we hope that what people are saying follows the policies that we've set forth. We're assuming good behavior on all sides. But as the chair, I'm the one that has to be the judge to say, "No, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to stop because you've crossed the line." Whether it's either the students or the personnel, or, you know, maybe somebody's just being outrageously vulgar. So, that's what we currently have as our policy. So, the second portion is where I really want to focus the time. How do we create an environment where we trust the public, and the public trusts us, so that people can say, can express an opinion, but also recognize that they can't express an opinion about students, and we prefer them not expressing an opinion in public about our staff? I think I can say that.
You can say that. So, we're in an educational environment, and all the educators in the room would appreciate that. The first, the first thing a teacher does when they start their first day of class is they write the rules on the board, and they, and they tell everyone what the rules are, and they tell everyone what the expectations are, what you can expect from me as a teacher, and what I expect of you as my students. And I think that's just good civil practice, that if you do the same thing here and you say, "Here's our policy. This is, this is what it means." And I think there's some stuff in here I would clean up a little bit to make it really clear what the limitations and expectations are. Here's our policy. We intend to follow it because we've adopted it, right? That's the idea. You don't have policies that you don't follow because that's dysfunctional. And this is how it applies. And frankly, a well-written policy shouldn't require an excessive amount of judgment on the part of the chair, or whomever, whatever official's running the meeting, because it's going to, it's going to be administered the same way, fairly and evenly, regardless of who's talking and what they're talking about. And if the public gets up and wants to criticize an individual employee, you know, "Hey, we're not, we're not, the policy says that you got to, there's other channels for you to address that issue and express that concern." And if they continue, then it's, you know...
So, how does that work? How does that work where we have our policies, which are essentially created by us? This is our jurisdiction. And then somebody wants to overlay federal or state right to free speech? How does, how does a chair? We've already created an open forum. How do, how do we get the buy-in, I guess? That's what I'm looking at. And I don't know if that's the right way to say it.
Um, I, I mean, I know what you're getting at. And I think what you're saying is, we have an open forum. Can we, you have two options. You have an open forum. Can we just simply rely on the public to honor our preference not to cross that line? Or the option, the other option, and perhaps the clearer option would be, do we have a policy that, that clearly says what the line is and what will be allowed and what will not? And my job as your attorney, and, and I do, I mean, I do the best I can with this kind of stuff, is to help prepare policies that draw the line in a way that does not run afoul of federal or state law. So, I look at all these cases, and I rack my brain, and I try to come up with something that's fair and as fair for everyone as possible. But having a policy that's an open forum, where you just rely on the good faith and goodwill of the public, is sort of like having a rule in a classroom that's not clear and hoping the kids just follow it. And I'm not, and I'm not trying to be demeaning about that, because you're not children, and that, that part of the analogy doesn't apply. I'm not saying that. But it, it, it leads to different interpretations and different exercises of discretion. And it's just very hard to do. It's just hard to, and you know what? I say this to my, my superintendents when I talk to them. We love giving superintendents discretion to do things, but discretion leads to liability. Right? That's a, that's a phrase. Isn't it better when I say, "What do you want?" No. They, discretion is where you get into trouble, right? You want some clear rules, policies, and you follow them. And if the policy itself is, is restricting speech, or if the actions of the board chair in applying it are restricting free speech, then we address that. We figure out how. And like, for instance, I, I can call the attorney at NHACLU and have a conversation about this policy, or policies in general, and weaken bad ideas around and kind of broker a deal that's like, "Hey, we agree this is legal." I, I work with other districts that have implemented policies. I know the Pembroke School District went through a much more tumultuous issue over public forums in the last couple of years as a result of stuff that's been in the press about an employee that worked there. And they, they had the ACLU involved, and they amended a policy in a way that ended up being sort of okay to everybody. So, that's a direction, if you gave me control, that's where I would steer you. I would, I would try to help you guys get to that point, so you can do the best you can.
I know my mouth's dry, and yours is probably drier because you've spoken more than I have. Does the board have any questions for Jim?
My question is, just because of your, your reach and your scope and the history you have with all the districts, for all of us, how does what we have with our current policy, you said you would clean it up a little, that's fine, but in the principle of our current policy, how does that compare or contrast with the others that you're seeing in New Hampshire and Maine?
It's very similar. You have the agenda, you, you created two separate forums, so you have the limited forum first, and then you have the open forum second. And then you have language in there about directing people through proper administrative channels, which isn't clear to me what that means, because you either have an open forum or not. You know, and so you create an open forum, and you're like, "But if it's about this, we're going to direct you through open channels." One of the things I don't, it says here is, the board, the board, the board may determine whether a matter was evolved through, so there's a lot of discretion in there too, which is like, "May," or "if." And when you have discretion, all of a sudden, it's like, you know, I might say, "Yeah, I don't like what you're saying because it's unpopular with, with me, or it's mean-spirited, so I'm going to say stop." That, the "may" stuff is bad. I don't think you want discretion. I think what you want is clear, clearer standards. I think the other thing you don't want in your policy is, is you don't prohibit outright, it's illegal to prohibit outright defamatory or slanderous or libelous, the courts have said. You can't prospectively prohibit defamatory remarks. The way you deal with that is you create a limited forum, and you have personnel issues addressed through other channels, not by prohibiting remarks that could be defamatory, because at the outset, you're saying, "You can't say these types of things because they could be defamatory," which is a content restriction. It's a violation of the First Amendment. So, that's the other way. I would take that language out. That's language that, that the ACLU has repeatedly told districts they need to remove from policies.
So, just as a follow-on to that, if I could, is so, insight in the balance point where the right to be defamatory needs to be honored with the right of the students or staff to not be publicly, whether it's accurate or not, where's that? That's what I'm most curious about, is where is the staff and student, where's that buffer to protect at the same time their rights?
The only way to really do it is to cap, is to cap the type of forum. It's to, it's to create the, narrow the type of forum you're creating.
Which would mean, agenda only.
That's the standard way. And so, what I'm, I know you can, it can be broader than agenda only, because agenda only is just the most convenient way to limit it, because it's like, "Well, here's the agenda." It may be a little more difficult to define, but state law does, DOE regulations do define specifically the rule, the rules of a school board versus the rules of the superintendent. The school board's here to conduct school board business, so complaining about a stu, well, the school, can't, don't bother complaining about a student, because the school board really doesn't have jurisdiction over students. How is it, like, how is it even germane to the board's meeting to have, to receive complaints about students? It's a superintendent's job, and there is a perfectly appropriate vehicle to raise concerns about students that's going to be more effective, and that's not going to distract the board from doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is running this corporation. So, I think you can have a limited forum, but it's limited to the business of the board, not just what's on the agenda. It's a little broader. It's a little bit more difficult to define, but that's the language I'm, I've, I've sort of worked on in my suggested language here. And it would say, for instance, "The second 15-minute period is set as a limited public forum, and that time remains part of the board meeting. The purpose of the board receiving public comment in the second period, it would be to allow citizens to communicate information or concerns that are within the jurisdiction and authority of the board only, but not including specific personnel, individual employment, specific student, and/or other complaints or matters which are within the primary jurisdiction and authority of the superintendent and or building administrators." That's how I would create that forum. Then I would, I would create an alternative channel where it explicitly says, "All comments about those things go through these policies." And I would apply it uniformly without, if you want to, you want to get up and say, "Mrs. Reed is the best assistant principal I've ever met, and she's great, and I want to tell you the great things she..." I, I think you honestly have to say, "Look, we're not accepting positive and negative. It's great you want to share the goodwill, but personnel action, we don't talk about at board meetings." Ew, that's kind of ugly. You don't want to do that. But the only way to really protect the kids without having to just cut people off because you don't like what they're saying, is to, is to control the forum that you've... you don't like what they're saying, is to, is to control the forum that you've created here.
Both good and bad.
As a matter of law.
Yeah.
Both good and bad.
So you're saying we just limit it to the severe of our responsibilities? Clearly defined as, this is what the board is responsible for, so we'll take comments on these items. Anything that's not on this list of responsibilities?
But the board, you know, it's, you know, you know, the conditions of your, of your buildings, the conditions of your fields, the, the curriculum that's going on in the schools, the, you know, all of that is within, all of that's within your purview. It's, it's individual student, individual personnel, those things aren't. And, you know, point of fact, is if the superintendent were to discipline, or say, under state law, if you, the superintendent wants to terminate a teacher, the process is, he doesn't have authority to fire a teacher. He has to make a recommendation and bring it before the board for a full and fair hearing. And it's like, it's like a court hearing, I've done them before. And the board is sitting as judge and jury under state law. So if parents are coming up and just telling the board constantly about a bad teacher, and then later, they're sitting as judge and jury in that teacher's dismissal hearing, hasn't the board prejudged or become biased or prejudiced? And haven't you deprived that teacher now of a full and fair hearing? So we, I, I try to protect these guys. And if he's gonna move forward to try to terminate, you know, a teacher, which is a very extreme thing, it does not happen very often, trust me. But if, if the superintendent's going to do it, there's no pre-meeting with the board to say, hey, this is what the person did, and just so you know. No, they, they separate it. There's a wall put up, and we don't cross that line. And I have had cases where the board and the superintendent have crossed the line. And I had a school board once direct this, because the person was arrested, possession of drugs or something like that, pretty extreme teacher. And the board, as you can imagine, you know, let's say one of your staff members got arrested and was on the front page of, of whatever newspaper is the big one up here. Which one is it?
Daily News.
Daily News up in 11? Whatever it is. Front page story, such-and-such teacher arrested, it happens. It's, it happens all over the state, and you've seen those articles. And the board calls the superintendent and said, I, fire that person right now. Like, we order you to fire that person. Hasn't the board already concluded what the outcome of that yet-to-happen dismissal case is gonna be? And I had that happen. And so I, that was a problem, and I had to go out and find nine new school board members from the community to take an oath of office and sit as a temporary school board, which is not fun and not cheap. So, yeah, long-winded answer.
Do you have other boards using this recommendation at this point?
No.
Nope, this'll be the first one.
Most guys either do agenda items only at this point, and don't, don't talk about anything off the agenda. I know you guys want to push it, so I've worked with a couple of colleagues, and I, like I said, the next step for me would be to, to pass, make this pass muster with the ACLU and get their feedback on it before we were gonna adopt something like that. I don't want you guys as a test case.
We don't want to be a test case.
No offense.
Sorry. You know, I'm a big proponent, but I really want to be able to have that involvement. I understand the risks that are inherent, though. Have you had this kind of conversation with other small communities like we have? Have good, engaged community members? So, I understand, you know, we want to give that privilege, but I also understand it's a small school, so if I say, hey, I'm having a problem with a principal, he, we know who I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I literally represent the biggest school district in the state, and I think the smallest school district in the state. Literally. And it runs the gamut. But for the most part, this conversation doesn't happen unless you get people in the community who really push the envelope, so that you guys are forced into making the tough decision. And like, I put in my memo, it forces the board to be in a position of making a decision that deprives some members of the community from a benefit because of a very small minority of the community. So my answer is, yes, but typically only when the envelope's pushed really hard in the community. So, I've got small districts where, look, you know, there's like four chairs, and I've sat in these meetings, and the parents just talk to the board, and it's like, it's like a totally casual thing, and it's pretty relaxed, and, and tends not to get into personnel stuff. So, they're not naming names, or alluding to names, and making it a personal attack.
So what kind of a liability are we opening ourselves up to? If we start, you know, with a public forum, and, you know, we start with the gunshot again, you know, I don't like Sean, and he did this and that, and can Sean turn around and see what's, what kind of a liability, how, how much out there are we putting ourselves?
Legally, in terms of a liability, well, there, there could be a defamation slander suit, and, and I think there, the argument could be made that the board is facilitating or allowing a forum to happen where employees are regularly defamed, and where private information, or personnel information, is being shared publicly. So you open yourself up to that kind of a claim. On the one hand, you can't prevent it prospectively, but on the other hand, you remain liable to the employee to the extent it's happening, and, which is why lawyers say they'll just do agenda items only, or something else more similar to, in terms of a limited forum.
If you're saying we can't prohibit those remarks, then we're-
Yeah, so it's like, the law doesn't always make sense, right? So like, the First Amendment is like, well, you know, here's, here's why. Someone in the, in the thing says, I don't like Mary, my son's, or Ms. Jones, my son's fifth-grade math teacher, because she said that she teaches, like, she doesn't know the difference between mean, median, and average, and she's been teaching my son the wrong thing, and she taught my other son the wrong thing too, and she's a terrible math teacher, or I don't like her. Hold on, you can't say that! That's, n-n-n-n-n, right? Like, let's, well, wait a second, it's only, remember, under the law, it's only defamation if what?
If it's true.
If it's not true. So what if she actually was teaching, she was teaching it wrong, and, and wasn't, and her evaluation showed that she wasn't a good math teacher, and she had been doing it for five years? That's not defamation. So you just cut them off from saying something that's perfectly true because you thought it might be. So you can't stop someone's speech because you think what they're saying could be slanderous.
Should be able to stop their speech because it's not-
If you set up the forum properly, you, you're not talking about these categories of things here.
Good or bad.
Good or bad. That's exactly, you're, you're, yeah, you're on it. That's how you do it. Which is less than ideal.
Right?
So what do we do with our public forum at the end of this meeting?
It exists as, as it is.
Yeah, you sum along and you, you educate the public, and you inspect goodwill, and if it gets really, really nasty, then, you know, you have to make a choice.
So I think at this point, you're telling us it's too broad. Our current policy for anything the public wants to say is, by standards in the state, broader than, that's our attorney, you like to say.
That, that's, that's actually, under the law, the first test, the first test of a policy's constitutionality is, is it overly broad? That is actually how the law tests whether it passed muster, and, and you determine whether it's overly broad. One of the factors is, is there, is it clear what, what's been established here? And is there discretion that, that really doesn't just limit categories, but sort of limits it potentially based on viewpoint or content? Does that make sense? This is confusing stuff. I mean, I like, I went to law school and studied this stuff, and, and there are First Amendment people who just, like, this is all they do. And wrapping, getting my head wrapped into all this, and really, really drilling down, took, didn't take that long. But it took a while, like, I had to really focus. So to expect other people who don't do this all the time to understand what I'm talking about is not easy. I have a memo. I don't know if all of you have had a chance to read it. I tried to make it like an outline, so it was a little more accessible for you.
So, one more question.
Yes, sorry.
If we wanted to move towards the sphere of responsibility of the board, and allow comments on that, how soon do you think we could, how soon you, would you be comfortable if we wanted to do something like that? You said you had a little more work to do on it, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
Yes. So, a couple weeks, I mean?
Yeah, that's, that's for him to get it to us. We have a policy committee-
For the policy committee to look at it, to decide.
Policy committee reviews it, brings it back to the full board. We can have a first reading, or we can kick it back to policy. We can have a second reading.
It's a couple of phone calls, you know, phone tag with, with the attorneys at ACLU, just to make sure they're, see what their thoughts are, and take a look at it. Not, not tremendously.
And I should know this, but I'm, I'm assuming there's a policy out there that outlines what the board's responsibility is?
Does RSC that outlines the responsibility of the board?
Yeah.
Is that, would that be adopted as our, our policy, or would it be? I'm just trying to think if you keep it all together and say, all right, here's the policy that says you can discuss within the sphere of the board. No, by the way, here's the list of items-
Here's the RSC.
Yeah, here's the list of items that would be applicable.
I think, and Jim, you could speak to it as well, but I think if we're going to introduce that, it would make sense for us to continue to educate our public along with it.
So like, you guys have legal references. The next step would just be to, like, right here, for example, in your CB policy, which is the school superintendent policy, it refers to Section Ed 302 of the DOE regulations. And Ed 302, and it's like, there's two parts to Ed 302. Those are both, they both speak to the duties of the superintendent, and I believe Ed, like, 301, are the duties of the school board, where they're just parsed out.
And that particular policy that you're reading came straight from the Hampshire School Board Association.
So what I would say is, just append those regulations to the back of the policy.